We have to evaluate every year, but every year we can insight. You still haven't got new things on your walls.
Welcome, everybody. It's nice that we're all back together again. Karen, I'll take the roll call. Ian Adiker.
Present.
Kelly Hooper.
Present.
Joe Petrowski.
Here.
Timothy Glass.
Present.
Josh Danda-Waley.
Present.
And all the Drew, present, and I am also present. Any adjustments to the agenda?
No, thank God.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Windsor School Committee meeting of March 17, 2021 as writ or with correction.
Over.
Second, it was in second a discussion. The discussion, I'll follow the votes by hand. Motion carries unanimously. Superintendent's report.
So one of the reasons I'll apply this no adjustments is I have. When we go three weeks between meetings, I've sent out my report to you in advance. However, I have a lot of things to add to that. So I try to do it as exhaustively as possible. So been spending quite a bit of time working with a number of people. Ida, Amanda, I'm going to organize to do it Scott Elbridge, who's a business manager over in RS4, trying to get a handle on the end of the year projections. It's a little bit early, actually just getting to the uprights. But there is, I probably shouldn't say this in front of the auditor, but it appears to me that the end of the year projections is up with a pretty sizable balance. And I, in fact, it kind of scares me. And so starting to talk to administrators, talk to people about what possibly, I'd like to, I have a number of thoughts, some of them are on the agenda tonight, what to do. It makes no sense. I know for some people it might seem logical to think about giving it back to taxpayers. I would really caution you not to do that. That's if you, we don't have a big amount of carryover. Every year we create a hole. We are going to use more than I would, than I'd like to use as balance carried forward, which will dovetail nicely with the report from the auditors so that our budget will be a reduction, pretty much a net zero, but a slight reduction for our taxes from the school side. But even taking that into consideration, there's still a pretty sizable amount of money. So I'd like to tell you that my plan is to look at things around the district that are non-SER related. So we, I'm going to talk more about that actually, I'll talk about it in a second. That we have a number of things from the COVID relief funds. We've got a number of things from the ESER 1, which we refer to as Cares money, and ESER 2. But there's a lot, there's a number of provisions and things that it has to be right there. You have to meet in order to use that. This, there are a number of things around the district that we probably should be looking at, but we're not going to get it out of COVID monies. It makes sense to be, for me, they're one-time monies. We have one-time money and one-time expenditures. Some of those include, I have a list here, got us that together. Well, one of them is bonuses I'm going to ask you to act on later. That's, that's going to be about $95,000, $93,000. We are going to fill all of our fuel tanks this year. I don't have an exact price on that. There, there are a number of implements and things that our custodial staff need. That's a pretty small number. That's probably less than $10,000. But again, you wouldn't, it's not specifically in the budget. But as you all know, that we go through this process of approving a budget, we put the numbers in there to justify the numbers we're asking from our taxpayers. Once that budget is approved, you actually have a great deal of latitude in determining how to spend that money. My take is this, and if you disagree, this would be the time to do that, that taxpayers want to raise this money to be spent this year. So to the extent possible, we should honor that and expend it this year as much as possible, you know, within certain guidelines. So, let's see, just a second. I do have another paper written down, a page written, oh, it's way here. So I'm looking at, you know, one of the things that we did, I'll tell you the process of sort of determining how much I'm projecting. We have six pages left. That's an easy number to figure out, just get that from Ida. That still represents just over, just under $2.2 million. We are looking to project from the Cares $320,000 forward into our next budget, which is about twice as much as I hope to, that'll be a later conversation if we want carried forward. We have $851,000 of summer salary accrual that was credited back. We had to account for that, it's in net money. I split $94,000 in staff bonus. And then approximately, and this is a very high estimate, about $500,000 for other things, non-salary benefit type things to finish the year. Most of that is in sports, you know, I mean, they pay for our coaches and everything for the, for the spring transportation, which we will have. So I budgeted $500,000. We're not going to spend $500,000, but I'd rather err on the side of caution. I mentioned we filled the tanks. One of the things that Sue and I have been talking about is we really could benefit, and actually Joe's mentioned this a couple of times, we could benefit as a school system from purchasing some used vans, middle school sports, I mean, not the middle school, special ed and sports and such could do that. We could look at some 10 or 12 passenger vans. I just have to get some clarification on what the, what the law is around. We want to be able to get vans that we don't need special licensing for, so our staff and our coaches can potentially drive them. So, and I'm saying two or three, I think, you know, it's, and we might even want to think about getting another pickup truck.
Can I just say that when the van does well with some of our homeless population, that could certainly help with transportation for some of that if we own the vehicles rather than paying for a taxi service or then having to find either additional staff or service vehicles to do that, so.
Yeah, a lot of schools are doing this. My former district has purchased some pickups and some vans. I think it's a good, I think it's a good use for not only that reason, but a number of others. And then Mr. Ladd had provided me with a list for, for the grade school, which, you know, I look at, I mean, I think we are trying to be careful about how much money we invest in the grade school because of, you know, where we're sort of maybe heading. Primarily the things that jump out at me is we have some issues with lifts and other things dealing with ADA compliance. So it would seem, you might think that ADA things would fall under the ESER monies, but it's, it might, it might not. If, if you're okay with that, then we'll, like I said, I don't necessarily vote. Then in talking to Jeff Cobro, the, if there is money left over, even a couple hundred thousand dollars, then we would look at probably designating it for, way as to get voter approval to put it aside for either capital improvement or technology. We've made great strides this year with technology, but we still have a ways to go. But again, it's that, that concept of one-time money, one-time expenditures. So I think that's a much better, much better. So it's a, I think it's a better idea than to give it back to the taxpayers and then ask them for it back, but they've already raised it, it's already accounted for. Joe?
On your list of things to do, did you put on a list of buying additional computers for use in the grade school so that the kids don't have to transport it back and forth?
So I will make sure to add that. We actually have had that conversation in one of my regional superintendent's meetings. One of the school systems not too too far from us purchased second devices for their kindergarten and first grade so that they, and they left them at home. They did not transport it back and forth. So the K1 kids had a device here and a device at home, so they didn't transport it back and forth. So that's, that's a real possibility, and I will jot that down. Okay. Awesome. So back to my, only one additional thing. I did include in your packet, I'm not going to go through it, but I did include the amortization schedule for the high school because basically that high school will be paid off soon. So I wanted you to see that was sent to me, so I just included it. I would like to reconvene the back to school committee, maybe right after April break. I think we, I might even wait a little bit longer. It's with things changing all the time, it's just, it doesn't make a lot of sense to bring them together and put together the plans and then have things change. And that could go either way. Things could become more restrictive with everything that's going on with mutation and the increase that we've had in numbers recently. I don't know. So I do want to bring that committee back together in case people are asking about that process. I did want to report that we had our first human rights mission professional development today. Amy Sneerson is the director. She was at the high school, worked with middle school and high school staff together. From my perspective, it went exceptionally well. I think the big, kind of the big, I don't want to say it wasn't a joke, but she really presented herself, and she said this when we first set this up, she said, "I'm a, I'm an attorney, I'm not really a presenter, so I'm not really the best presenter in the world." And she started, you know, she ended up with the staff that, and I thought she did outstanding job. So I suppose you should probably consider a new career as a presenter, because she's pretty good. I'm sure she's a good lawyer, too. But that, the grade school will be on May 5th. It's Saturday night, dirty, if anybody's available wants to see that. Did record the third permission, the presentation today, but that really is only intended for people who are not able to either make today or it's not for public consumption. I'm sure as a school board member, if you, a school committee member, if you want to see it, we could probably make that available to you. We had a drive-in workshop, which went through main school, school superintendents. Last Friday, it was basically an 8:15 to 1 o'clock Zoom, a little bit painful. And, but it was really good. We covered a lot of topics, and you can imagine that statewide as a group of superintendents, there's a lot to talk about. Primarily, the first hour plus almost two hours was focused on the new ESER funds, ESER 3 is what we refer to that. I usually say the Biden money because of trying to differentiate them. So talked a lot about that process. I, I sent out an email last week when we got the ceiling for the health insurance. I think it was capped at 4.2 for the state. Our rate came in at 2.83. So we've, we did well with that. And lastly, in terms of, well, in terms of the additional pieces, we did finally get our ESER 2 approvals. Very exciting. There's, there's, there aren't that many projects, and it's primarily paying part of Megan's salary, the additional technology person that we cut from the budget. So that's in there. And the majority of the money is going to capital improvements with a, with a focus on the need for that to happen now as opposed to down the road for air quality issues. So that primarily will affect all three rest schools, including siding and roofing issues here at the grade school, roofing issues at the high school, and some roofing stuff work at the middle school. Biggest project, of course, is at the high school, surprisingly. So that was approved, $671,264.35. Appointments, we are pleased that Dylan Veu has been appointed to the district computer tech position. He started on Monday. And we have hired Timmy Bertwell to be the grade school student information secretary and receptionist. There are no resignations tonight. There's a pending retirement, which you'll see next meeting. And a transfer, Kristen Barnes, and I think I included that in my message to you guys. Kristen Barnes is born from the high school guidance administrative assistant to be the administrative assistant at the middle school.
Is that, that's not effective until next year?
Next year, right.
Is it okay if Kristen says a few words?
What?
Is it okay if Kristen says something about that transfer?
Yep.
Okay. Is that letter on you? Nope, Kristen, you need to. Go ahead. On you. Nope, you still on you. She's still on you. You need to on you.
Might have to check her actual.
There she is.
All right. I'm sorry about that. I'd just like to thank Superintendent Hodgkins and the school, school committee for approving my transfer. I look forward to working with the Windsor middle school staff and the new principal. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thanks, Kristen. Any other questions on either my written report or anything I shared tonight? Thank you.
And I want to say congratulations to Kristen and Dylan and Timmy. There is no committee chair report tonight, so we will go right to the committee.
I actually forgot.
Oh, okay.
Pretty major.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
I'm sorry to go back.
No, that's okay.
But I do want to announce that Joel Stoneton, our high school, middle school athletic director and ADEDA students, has been recognized for two awards, won by the MIAA administrators and also from the Valley Conference, right? For his outstanding work this year. And certainly you all know how challenging this work has been, and Joel has been a leader statewide in all those efforts. So he's got two very nice plaques, a trophy type of things that. A lot of credit goes to the people that work around me too, though, especially my coaches.
Are you ready?
All right.
All right, so we will go to the committee reports and start with finance.
No, do finance, yeah.
Okay. For the policy committee, we met on March 17, and we have six policies to bring forward for press reading later tonight. Negotiations?
I can report that we are making progress. We're hoping to make more progress in the next couple of weeks. As you know, the superintendent next week is presenting the budget to the town council. Of course, part of the budget is when we think that negotiations are going to end up, what it's going to take to do without cost structure. And so we have been aiming to take and try to get as much done as possible before that presentation. It's always a little bit easier to explain the whole thing to them rather than come back to the town council three weeks, four weeks, six weeks later and try to explain it and why it's different. So it's very important that we try to narrow it. You don't have to finish it, you just get it narrowed into a spot where you think you are going to achieve. But for the most part, things have been well received on both sides, and there's been a lot of cooperation. So I'm optimistic that we're going to take and give this.
Okay, there's no administrator's reports tonight, so we can go right on to our audit presentation by Jennifer Connors of Runyon, Kirsty Willett. Thank you.
Thanks for having me. Hopefully you can all hear me okay. You should have a set of graphs in front of you that look like this. It's a brief overview of the audit, so I'm going to go through that. And if anybody has any questions or comments, feel free to jump in at any time. First of all, I want to say that the audit did go well, and the staff were really great working with us. We actually performed most of the audit remotely, and that meant that the staff had to scan in a lot of information and email it to us. And we really appreciate their flexibility in working with us and doing that extra work to get the audit done. If you flip to the first page, I'll go right into the details. This first graph is an overview of the audit itself. So we were here for a couple of days in May to do some pre-audit work, and at that time, we usually gather information for the audit. We do some testing of internal controls and pretty much just get some information ahead of time. And then we were actually, we actually performed the audit the week of October 5. As far as the financial statements themselves, they did receive an unmodified opinion, and that, that means they are materially correct in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. So that is a good result for the financial statement audit. And besides auditing the financial statements, we're also required to do some testing under government auditing standards. And under those standards, we are required to test compliance with laws, regulation, contracts, and grant agreements, as well as where you're supposed to do some testing of internal controls as they, as they relate to financial reporting. And under that testing, the town did receive one compliance finding for continuing that disclosure. Now, that's pretty much on the town side, but what that means is the town issues publicly traded bonds, and because they are publicly traded, they are required to file certain disclosures with the municipal securities rulemaking board or MSRB on their website. That information is required to be filed 270 days after fiscal year end, but there were some years in which that information was filed late, and so the town, including 2019. So the town did receive a compliance finding for that. As far as our testing for internal controls, we did not find any material weaknesses, nor did we have any significant deficiencies. We did have some minor, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Jennifer, I don't mean to interrupt, but I, the, would it be fair to say that we're, and I don't remember now, but I've seen it in a while, but the, we don't have the recommend, we don't have enough people here within our school system to have a delineation of the duties in the way that auditors generally.
Yes, and I was actually going to get into that a little bit later, where we talk about segregation of duties. Is that what you were thinking of?
Yes.
Yep, yep. Yeah, we did have some, some minor recommendations, but nothing that rose to a level of a material weakness or a significant deficiency. And then the town sometimes has to have what's called a single audit under uniform guidance. And what that means is that the town will sometimes receive and spend more than $750,000 in federal grants when it does.
Okay, ready? Do you want me to get started? And I just wanted to remind everybody on the chat, if they could put their first and last, on Zoom, if they could put their first and last name in, please, thank you. Okay, where are we?
Yeah. So I was still on the summary of audit results, and I was going over the last point. So the, the town will sometimes have to undergo what's called a single audit under the uniform guidance. And what that means is when the town spends and receives over $750,000 in federal grants, then it will have to undergo this, this extra testing. And we would normally come in and test some of your larger grants, such as local entitlement. But this year, the, the town actually fell under that threshold, so they did not have to have a single audit. However, in 2021, I anticipate that the town and school department will have to undergo a single audit, most likely because of the CARES Act for funds and ESER. Let's see, so the next graph we have here is an overview of the general fund, fund balance slash deficit. So as you can see, the, the fund balance has vastly improved over the last four fiscal years. There is no fund deficit in the current year because the general fund revenues exceeded expenditures by about $733,000. In addition, the town transferred approximately $831,000 to eliminate the remaining deficit. And over the last four fiscal years, total fund balance has increased by almost $1.7 million. And I anticipate that that will continue to improve. I haven't looked at the FY 2021 numbers yet, but it would be nice to see a positive balance there. The next couple of graphs will go over why you had the change in fund balance that you did. So on the fourth graph, we have the general fund revenues, and this is an overview of the budget to actual for the general fund. And looking at some of the larger variances, you can see that local assessments were under budget by $205,000. And that's because the budget actually includes the local assessment for adult education and school lunch. However, those amounts are budgeted in the general fund, but they're actually reported in separate special revenue funds. State education subsidy was also under budget, and that had to do with changes at the state level. Tuition revenue was also under budget as enrollment differed from original projections. And overall, total revenues were approximately $241,000 under budget, which was about 2% of the budget. And then on the next graph, we have the general fund expenditures. So again, looking at some of the budget to actual variances, you can see that special education expenditures were under budget as health insurance enrollment was lower than anticipated. In addition, there were some costs were lower due to school closures. Other instruction expenditures were under budget as costs related to extracurricular activities were lower. That's also due to the school closures. Student and staff support expenditures were under budget as employee costs were lower than anticipated, also due to school closures. Transportation expenditures were also under budget due to school closures at year end. Facilities maintenance expenditures were under budget as less maintenance was required for the schools due to school closures. And then finally, I was going to point out that you'll see that there are transfers out that are budgeted. That does include the local assessments for adult education and school lunch, but as I mentioned, those aren't actually transferred out. Those are reported as revenues in the special revenue funds. So overall, total expenditures before transfers out were under budget by 4%. The next couple of graphs we have are an overview of the general fund expenditures as a pie chart. So each category is expressed as a percentage of your total expenditures. So as you would expect, regular instruction and special education are the largest piece of the pie. And then on the following page, we actually have the same percentages for 2019, so you can compare the two fiscal years. Overall, there were minor changes. Regular instruction decreased 1%, special education decreased 1%, student and staff support changed 1%, system administration increased 2%, debt service decreased 1%, and transfers out increased 1%. And then all of the other categories stayed the same. Is there any questions about any of the graphs?
Go ahead, I have another question.
Sure.
Is there any way that we can speed up the timeline for when we get a report back from the auditor? If the pre-audits in May and audits the link of the October 5th, and then we don't get the report until now, that's.
Right.
And I don't know if this is COVID related, but it just always seems that it takes absolute months for this to come through, and then we've already built next year's budget, not knowing if we have errors or if we have things that we, you know, need to work on.
Yeah. Well, unfortunately, this was an unusual year where with the closures and people working remotely, so things did tend to get dragged out a little bit. I can tell you, compared to last year, we're definitely ahead of where we were. Their reports were issued a couple of months earlier than they were in 2019. And of course, we're always looking to improve on that. I know that with Bernice now helping out the school department, that will probably help tighten up some things on the school department side, so hopefully that will make that timeline a little more efficient. If you want specific dates, I mean, I can certainly look into when we sent drafts and those kind of things. Is that what you were looking for?
Well, no, it just seems like, I mean, we've already set next year's budget and where we're getting our audit report. So if, if we had any errors. So if we had any errors or things that we weren't doing, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Hachkin, you know, it seems like if we were making errors or had things that we needed to fix, you've already built next year's budget, and we could affect some of those same errors. And now we're another year out, a second audit of having that same error again because we wouldn't have known because we're just getting this report now. It just seems like it's very long.
Yeah, what I would say is, is we are on the budget that we put together this year. I had done some early projections for carryover, and so that's unaudited. So in other places where I've been, we were able to use an audited balance carry forward, which is obviously preferable. I think we're very confident in the numbers that I've done here. But in a perfect situation, what Jane is saying seems to be like the right thing to do. I don't remember what use, what term I used, but I think I might have put anticipated balance forward or something like that. And I tried to just put other, not put carryover FY 21. And I would prefer to put, I think we'd have greater confidence from the community if it said audited balance forward, but I didn't have that, so. It's just, you know, if we can, I don't know what the history has been, but it seems like when I first started as a superintendent, we were getting these reports, you know. Even if we could get it two months early or a month and a half early, I don't know what it takes to make that happen. It seems like it's gotten later and later. I mean, I don't have the history, so I don't know. But it does seem that, you know, we had to file an extension with the state this year, right? We'll be on the reporting deadline?
Yes.
So, I don't know, if there's some way to get us closer to more in compliance or ultimately moving forward, we can put an audited number in there, that would be great.
Yeah, no, well, that's something that we are working on improvement for sure. And if, even if we can't get you a final report, we'll certainly see what we can do about getting you a draft that you can use.
Thank you.
Sure. But when, I'm just kind of curious, do you have a specific date that you would need that by?
You know, ideally, if we had it by, I mean, I would like to have before March of '14, but then maybe-
Oh, yeah, no, that's, that's not the year.
I mean, I guess ideally in my mind, if we had it, I'm putting the budget together, looking at revenue side and those things, probably by the end of January, but I don't know if that's realistic. It seems like it used to be, so I'm not sure. I mean, that would be ideal for me.
Well, generally speaking, we would try to issue before the end of the summer.
Yeah.
So they can have a filing extension.
I'm checking that from way back, but I wasn't going to push, we were April, so.
Yeah.
End of December would be outstanding.
Well, like I said, we were optimistic that we were going to move that timeline up this year. And then 2020 happened, so our plan just kind of went out the window.
Jennifer, could you just real quickly, just explain the whole notion of carryover funds and the guidance? So maybe, maybe I'm asking the wrong question, but-
Are you talking about the state restrictions?
Yeah.
Sure. So the state currently has in place a restriction on the amount of undesignedated fund balance that you can carry forward to the next fiscal year, and it is 3% of your budget. So that wouldn't include any amounts that you might have that would be set aside for reserves or any amounts that you're carrying that are restricted. That would simply be the amount that is unassigned and it carries forward to the next fiscal year. Now, if you do exceed that 3% threshold, the state does give you three fiscal years to spend down that balance or at least come up with a plan to use up that balance. I've heard that there has been some discussion with increasing that threshold, but as of yet, I haven't seen anything official from the state.
So thank you for that. What I wanted to share with all of you is, this is my way of thinking about it. This is obviously not an official statement about efficiency of the budget. But if we, if we carry over 3%, and that ends up being, you know, that's about $360,000 of taxpayer money that can be carried over, and that's a lot of money. But the way I look at it is, if we carry over that amount of money, that means that our budget basically ran 97% efficient. I think that's pretty good. And I personally, my goal is always that we carry over about 1.5%. Which again, for our budget is a little more, about $150,000, a little bit more than that. But again, I think the point that people don't understand, when it feels like a lot of money, which it is, that means on a 12-plus million dollar budget, we ran 98.5% efficient. That is pretty darn good. So I just keep that in mind as we talk about, you know, budgets in the future and those types of things, what we're responsible for, what I'm responsible for making sure we focus on.
This might not be the time, so let me know if we should, should kind of hold this off. But so you've spoken a few times about not wanting to carry over 3% every year and a lower amount. And then tonight, you were talking about setting aside some money for some-
Either capital improvement or technology.
Thank you. So we know that we're going to need some capital improvement, significant capital improvement in the next decade or less. So if we have 3% carryover, and you feel comfortable really only carrying over 1.5%, can we take that other 1 and 1.5% every year and bank it for, you know, the physical properties?
Yeah, so it's kind of a generous, it's a designated, and then where to keep to getting is reserved. And there's a process that you have to go through with the community to approve them, creating that reserve. And then when we want to spend it, we got to get their permission to expend it as well, so. What I'm saying, though, to the mayor who said this earlier is, the people of Winthrop have approved spending X amount of dollars, 12 million plus dollars. And I think it's our job to try and spend as close to what they, they authorize us to spend as possible. Obviously, we legally can't go over. So if we, if we get between, if we get between 97 and 99%, that's pretty darn good. And we will do that, we will look at having some sort of reserve. Now, for those of you who've been on the, and I'm new here this year, but you know, and this is unbelievably awesome news as far as I'm concerned, that the school department had a deficit to the town up to this year. So even if we were 5% over, then it would make no sense for us to use any of that money to offset the budget for the following year because we owe, we owed that money. So what, we can do it now this year, and I think hopefully, we can do it moving forward every year because we're now whole as a school system, as a town, we're all whole. So until you become whole, you really can't spend that money. It's not really yours to spend. Is that very, Jennifer, I don't want to speak out of turn, but-
The next part I was going to go over was the management layer comments that we had. So one of the comments that you addressed was the segregate, segregation of duties comment. And this would apply to both the town and the school department.
Okay, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I did not send it to you guys, sorry.
Oh, oh, okay, sorry. If I'd known, I would have brought copies, so I guess you'll just have to listen to me talk. So for those of you who are not familiar with the concept of segregate, segregation of duties, that is when you take a process or a function and you break it up so that different employees are performing different parts of that function. And the example that I always use is cash. If you have an employee that has access to cash, you don't want that same person performing the bank reconciliations and doing the journal entries for cash and preparing the deposits and also writing checks. Ideally, you would have different person, different people are performing those different steps. And I can say that for the central office, the segregation of duties is pretty good. They've actually gotten better. But there are still areas where you still have one individual who's doing a lot of the same functions. An example that we always use is an outside department, like a police department, where you might have one individual who's taking in that cash, and then they're also preparing the deposit and they're keeping the records for that cash. So we keep this comment in here, just so you know that there is a risk involved with having a lack of segregation of duties. But we also understand that it is a cost benefit analysis because ideally, you really can't go out and hire as many people as you would need to have ideal segregation of duty. So there is a, there is a cost benefit to it, to having it. The next comment, I'll skip that one, that has to do with the town payroll. The next comment we had had to do with the school accounts payable warrants. So we did some testing of internal controls related to the school department's cash disbursement procedures. And there were two dates that we selected on which only the superintendent had signed the warrants. And I do know that the school department has a policy that requires the review and approval of accounts payable warrants by members of the school committee. And the warrants were issued when the town was only open during limited hours due to the pandemic. However, the school department should have received those signatures either electronically or had some other kind of documentation for approval, such as email approvals. The next comment we had had to do with the budget. We usually get a copy of the budget to actual as it's entered into the accounting software. And then we compare that budget to the budget as it was passed at referendum. We did notice that the budget that was entered into the accounting software was out of balance. In addition, there were some budget line transfers that had been approved by the school committee that had not been entered into the accounting software. And we did bring this to the attention of the accounting staff, and they did subsequently fix that by including those transfers in there. So the budget that you see in the financial statements is the correct amount. But we wanted to point that out because the staff that enters the budget, they should make sure that the budget does agree with the original budget as passed, as well as it should reflect any subsequent changes, such as budget line transfers.
Jennifer, was part of that due to prepaying some things from FY 21? Is that part of the, I don't know, I don't want to say the discrepancy, but the change, the shifting of monies?
I'm sorry, say that again, I couldn't quite hear.
The, were there, I know, because it's my first year coming in, I was made aware that there were a number of purchases that were made that were budgeted for FY 21, but they were purchased out of FY 20 monies because it was expecting some additional carryover. Was that part of this discrepancy or?
I don't think so. I think these were just transfers between the cost centers themselves. I believe that the reason that it was out of balance is there were some adjustments to payroll amounts that were approved after the budget was, was passed. But it still has to be entered as a balanced budget. So if salary amounts are increased in one place, something else has to decrease.
So the reason I ask the question, I just want to come back to what I was talking about earlier, is I think there are, it's certainly not unusual practice for schools to prepay things, even after the budget has been approved, if there's money left over. But I think you have to be careful about how much you do that. For me personally, I like, I like the notion of looking at the balance or projecting the balance for this year. FY 21, voters have approved a certain budget for FY 21, and try to find things that we can purchase now included in there. You will, as a committee, or maybe not, if we, if we're really lucky, sometime before the end of the fiscal year, before the end of June, we may have to go through and make some modifications because no lines can be overextended. As things stand right now, unless something really bizarre happens in the next couple of months, I don't see us being over on any bond, so we don't have to make those adjustments.
The next comment that we have has to do with the activity funds. We tested cash receipts and cash dispersments for the grade school, middle school, and the high school. And we actually had quite a few comments for those. For all of the schools, we noticed that the school department does have a policy that all schools should use a two-part daily cash log. This is a policy that was actually approved by the school committee a few years ago. And we determined that the schools are not using those logs. In addition, some of the schools are entering their receipts the same day that they are deposited. So it is difficult to determine if the amounts have been accounted, all of the amounts have been accounted for, and if the amounts have been deposited in a timely manner. For the high school, we selected 40 cash receipts. And of those amounts, 18 were missing signed deposit slips, only four of which were actually during the school closure period. We did try to take that into consideration if the schools were closed because we know that it was a lot harder to follow protocol. And we were unable to verify when those amounts were received. We also identified eight deposits at the high school that were made three or more weeks after the amounts were received. Again, only one of those was made during the school closure period. We also tested high school cash dispersments. Again, we selected 40 transactions to test. And of those amounts, there were 10 dispersments that were missing approvals on the vouchers or requests for payments, one of which was a reimbursement to the principal. There were four instances in which the supporting documentation was insufficient or missing. There were two reimbursement requests from employees that were word documents, which we don't really feel that's sufficient because it really should be third-party documentation, such as a receipt or an invoice. And there was one online purchase printout that was not itemized. We found one dispersment for which $24.66 was paid in sales tax. And there was one check that was missing a second signature, that required a dual signature. We also tested dispersments for the middle school. And for those, none of the dispersments that we selected had a payment voucher or documented principal approval. There was one dispersment that had payment of $63 in sales tax, and there was one check that was missing a second signature. And also for the middle school, we compared the bank reconciliation to the QuickBooks records, and we noticed there was an unexplained difference of about $4,000. So the total on the bank reconciliation should match the total of all of the individual accounts in the QuickBooks amount, but there was an unexplained difference. We also noticed there were $2,000 in outstanding items on the bank reconciliation that really should not have been outstanding items. And those were things like adjustments and transfers and deposits that should have cleared the bank already. So we have a few recommendations for that, for those findings. Sorry, I shouldn't say findings because overall, those are minor things, but there are ways that, that controls could be improved. Our first recommendation is that the school should either start using the two-part daily cash log as required by the, the policy that was adopted by the school committee, or the policy should be amended with another form, acceptable form of cash receipts documentation. If they're not going to adhere to that policy but keep some kind of alternative documentation, that's fine. But when we do our testing, we base it on a policy that was enacted. Each person that's responsible for the activity fund should ensure that required approvals are obtained before the checks are written. And that includes approvals for principals for dispersments and approval by the superintendent for any reimbursements to the principal and any second signatures in those instances in which dual signatures are required on the checks. Each person responsible for the activity fund should ensure that sufficient third-party documentation is received, as I mentioned, such as a receipt or an invoice. And also, if the dispersments are reimbursements, that individual that is being revert, that is being reimbursed should provide a copy of the original receipt or invoice, as well as proof of payment if it's not on the receipt. Since the town and the school department are a tax-exempt entity, every effort should be made to avoid paying sales tax. And in those instances in which a sales tax is paid, the person responsible for the dispersment should follow up and see if they can be reimbursed for that sales tax. Bank accounts for the, in which the activity funds are held should be reconciled to the QuickBooks records. If there are any differences, that usually means that there's an error either on the bank reconciliation or there may be some unallocated activity in the QuickBooks file. um, activity in the QuickBooks file. Uh, there may be transactions that have not actually been allocated to those individual accounts. In addition, any old or outstanding item should be investigated and, and cleared up from the bank reconciliation. And then, any amounts that are collected for activity funds, uh, should be deposited no more than one week after they are received. That is actually in the school department's policy, that they are required to deposit those amounts within one week. And in addition, deposit slips should be obtained and filed for supporting documentation of those receipts. Sorry, that was a really long comment. Uh, that is it for what I have, uh, for comments. Does anyone have any questions about any of those?
I've heard the same comment before about how we're reconciling our accounts, whether we're signing, all of that I've heard too many times. It just seems to me that that means that we're not getting through with training that needs to be not only given, but also checked up on, so that we don't hear this every, in some cases, every year. I don't think it's as bad as it used to be, okay? We've tried to consolidate, uh, and tried to keep things together and not allow too many miscellaneous accounts, et cetera. But, uh, I still think that's one of the goals, is to, to work on that, to provide the training and the necessary evaluation of it all, so that we don't have this same type of complaint. You're not saying that there's a lot of missing money, I didn't hear you saying that.
Right, no, I'm not saying that at all.
Which, cause in some years, you get the answer was yes. Uh, but I didn't hear you saying that, I hear you saying that it's probably there, it's over here, it's over there, that type of thing.
Right.
That's gotta be, that's gotta be correct.
I do know that, um, the, um, accounting staff here did have a meeting with the, um, the secretaries from the individual schools, and they did go over the policy uh, that is currently in place, as well as they did go over our comments with them. So they are working with the individual schools on, um, tightening up some of these areas. And I will also add that, um, for all of the school departments and the RSUs that I personally audit, I don't think I have a single one that, that does not get a comment about activity funds. It's just one of those areas that it's hard, um, you have one person who's doing a lot of different things, so it, it's a hard, it's a hard area to have, um, perfect controls over. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Jennifer.
There you go.
You can hang out if you want.
So, good evening.
Thank you, Joe.
So moving on to old business. I will entertain a Winthrop School Committee motion to approve the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school operating budget.
I move that the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two school operating budget, including nutrition and adult education, for the time of winter be approved in a total amount of twelve million, two hundred eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred seventy-five dollars and six cents, and the superintendent be authorized to present that budget to the council.
Second. Moved and seconded, any discussion? See now, I will call the vote, by hand, please. And the vote, the motion carries unanimously. I will entertain a Winthrop School Committee motion to approve the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two adult education budget.
I move that the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two adult education budget, for the time of winter be approved in the amount of ninety-four thousand, six hundred twenty-seven dollars and thirty-five cents, including the sum of fifty-six thousand to be raised in support of that budget, and that the superintendent be authorized to prepare and deliver that budget to the council for approval.
Second. Moved and seconded, any discussion?
I have a question. I'm just looking at the, um, the budget in the amount, which is the fifty-six thousand, because that's local, I'm assuming.
It's correct.
Sorry, I just want to make sure that the, the numbers are correct, but there is, the ninety-four is not on this sheet.
Right.
Okay.
And I'll, I'll anticipate that you might ask it for the school, the school nutrition. On the spreadsheet that I sent you, uh, you'll note that just above, in, in the middle column for two thousand twenty-two, uh, we do treat those, those accounts, the adult ed and the school nutrition accounts, of which referred to as enterprise accounts, we are responsible for, for managing them and whatever, but they're not truly part of the, the, the whole budget, so, um, up above, the first eleven articles all have to do with, with the school, the regular school budget. So that's why they have the amounts. What's included in article twelve and article fourteen is just the local authorized amounts.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? I will call the vote, show the hands, please. Okay, the motion carries unanimously. I will entertain a Winthrop School Committee motion to approve the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school food service and nutrition budget.
I move that the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two school food service and nutrition budget, for the time of winter be approved in the amount of five hundred forty-seven thousand, three hundred twenty-eight dollars and ninety-five cents, including the sum of two hundred thousand to be raised in support of that budget. The superintendent be authorized to prepare and deliver that budget to the council for approval.
Second. Moved and seconded, any discussion?
I, I just could ask one, one discussion. We know that during this, these pandemic times, that additional money was provided for in nutrition services that allowed us to continue, uh, to serve the students all through the summer, et cetera. And I hear that that's gonna happen again, but if that is going to happen again, we can expect more money to come with the happening to pay for the insurance.
That's correct. So, look, these, you asked a question, sort of lends itself to me. I, I mentioned earlier the notion of enterprise accounts. If the, uh, the reason they're separate from the rest is because, in theory, those programs pay for themselves. They're not, they're not specifically attached. Um, and I say in theory, because there are very, very two schools that actually, those programs, you know, adult ed and, um, food services raise and expend the same amount of money. So, in almost all situations, school systems have to ask taxpayers to kick in some money to make sure those budgets are flat, so, um, that will be the case. It's been a very, I mean, adult ed was actually fairly easy to put together, but the, uh, uh, school nutrition was a more challenging one, because we don't know. I mean, you said, like Chuck, when you said that, cause I don't know. We don't know as of right now, this year, we're paying a hundred percent for breakfast and for lunch for a hundred percent of our kids. Uh, we have to plan on that not happening next year, but it, it, it's a, it's a toss of a coin right now, whether that happens or not. We want to have Joshua on to do any nice videos for us to promote the lunch.
Oh, good idea.
Good idea.
He said he'll do that from college, but.
I like those chicken sandwiches, too.
A mac and cheese.
Any other questions or discussion? And I will call the vote, by hand, please. I see five, so the motion carries unanimously. Moving on to new ones. I will entertain a motion to elect Susan Pilot as Winthrop Middle School Principal for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two.
I'm going to elect Susan Pilot as Winthrop Middle School Principal for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year.
Second. Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Um, well, I sent you my write-up on it, but I, um, Sue is here tonight, so you can all see her. And, um, if you give you the opportunity to say something if you want to, you're not required to, you serve the county.
I'm just super excited. I can't wait to, to work with Jolene and, and other people I haven't met yet, I was just, Mr. Campbell, I'm very excited and really honored. Thank you.
Uh, I would say first, and I'm very excited as well, the committee did a great job, my thanks to people who served on the committee. This is Adele representing you guys, and Joel, and Megan, and whoever else is out there. Uh, but for me personally, it's, it's, uh, this is great, because Mrs. Pilot was, is coming to us from SAD fifty-two, Turnover East Green, and she had the honor, or privilege, or whatever, or bad fortune, whichever you want, of having my boys, uh, and she was the assistant principal, but as, as I told most of you, my boys were in middle school, they, they were not the pains in the butt that they became in high school, so didn't really have to deal much with, uh, with any disciplinary issues, but, uh, got to know Sue, you know, well during that time, so I'm very pleased to, uh, have her here.
Any other questions, discussion? All right, I'll call the vote, with the show of hands, please. And the motion carries unanimously.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, welcome aboard.
And welcome, yeah. We look forward to working with you. I'll entertain a motion to elect Joshua Farr as Adult Education Director for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two.
So moved?
Second. Moved and seconded, any discussion? All right, I'll call the vote.
I'm sorry.
Okay, motion carries unanimously. I'll entertain a motion to elect Susan Fawcett as Special Education Director for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two.
So moved? Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Uh-uh.
All right, I'll call the vote. Motion carries unanimously.
And Mrs. Fawcett is here.
Congratulations. I'll entertain a motion to elect the following administrators for two-year contracts for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three.
I'm, oh, sorry, I forgot to, sorry.
Mark Campbell, Winthrop High School Principal, Joel Stone, Dean of Students Athletic Director, Aaron Weeks, School Nutrition Director.
I'm going to elect the following administrators for two-year contracts, twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Mark Campbell, uh, as Winthrop High School Principal, Joel Stone, Dean of Students Athletic Director, and Aaron Weeks as School Nutrition Director.
Second. Moved and seconded, any discussion? None? So I'll call the vote. Motion carries unanimously.
And Mr. Stones is here, Mr. Campbell is here.
Aaron is making muffins. Aaron's making muffins.
Yes, yeah. Aaron is making muffins, we hope.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the contracts of Winthrop Public Schools' continuing contract teachers for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year, and there is an attached list.
So moved?
Second.
Jim, is this new to do all of them? I thought it was the wrong continuing contract, we didn't have to do that.
Yeah, um, that was a discussion in the office, and as long as I'm the superintendent here, we will do them every year. I think it is proper protocol. You will probably note this, that it's, um, at least two months overdue. We should be bringing our continued contract teachers to the school committee, um, to vote on in February, within six months. The law does stipulate, which is, I think, what, what the PIS hung their hat on, pass, that if you fail to let them know within six months, they're automatically renewed. Hence the essence of continued contract. I think it's, in the, I think it's best, it's a best practice to bring your staff to the school committee for them to be approved. The community gets to see who that, who that staff is. Um, and heaven forbid if we have a situation where we non-renew someone, and the only time you ever see anything about continued contract teachers is when it's being non-renewed, that's when you run into some issues with liability. So, you will see the continued contract tonight, which is next year you'll see in February, and next month you'll see the probationary teachers.
Okay, that was gonna be my second question, cause I thought that was our pre-agenda, but.
It was.
Okay.
If you remember what I said, that's what I realized when you asked me.
Perfect, thank you.
And, and not that anybody cares to know all these details or study school law, but um, continued contract teachers need to know of non-renewed six months in advance, and probationary teachers need to know three months in advance, that's why a big difference in them, um, Linda approved.
Can I ask a question?
Say no. Yes, Joe.
Thank you. Now, where do we put people who are providing special services, like, uh, physical therapy, occupational therapy, nurses?
Well, the nurses are in the, in the collective party, I mean, unit, the teachers. Uh, a lot of the other ones, you just, the sort of special services, like OTPT, uh, those are all done by contracted service.
Contracted service?
Yeah, they don't, they don't go in here.
That's news to me.
Any other questions, or comments, or discussion?
Just to thank them all for coming back.
Yes. All right.
Everybody for the job, sure.
Yes. I'll call the vote. The motion carries unanimously. Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve the following policies for first reading. BEDFA, abstentions. BG, school board policy. BGR, policy adoption procedure. CBIR, superintendent evaluation timeline. GB, GE, return to work and late duty assignments, and GBP, earned TV.
Can I so moved that I don't have to repeat all that?
No.
So moved.
Second. Moved and seconded, discussion? So, I think you all have them in your packets. We'll start right with, um, BEDFA, abstentions. Everybody there?
Yes.
So we had our changes. Any comments, questions, concerns, about this policy? Pass it, pass it, okay, we'll move on to the next one. Which is BG, school board policy. The only change that we made is in the middle of the first page, where it says note, the source for this definition, so on and so forth, we basically just lined that out. And that is the only change.
So that notes goes beyond?
Yep. Yes.
In the first line, the school unit name, should that not say Winthrop?
Oh, it doesn't.
Yep, in all the places, that's, it, yes, that's true. Maybe we have a different draft.
Yeah, I had school unit names, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, but it's, um,
There's two of them, that's why.
Just FYI, it's probably not what we're gonna talk about specifically, but every time it mentions the word board, we change it to school committee, and obviously, in that case, it should be Winthrop School, Winthrop Public Schools.
Yeah.
On mine, it has bracketed, school, you can get.
Yeah, that's interesting, you know, it's funny, it's in our, um, in our policy packet, I had two of that, all of the policies, and one is the way you had it, and one had our head on it, so, it's not interesting.
If you look at the next one, and again, I'd like to encourage you not to be dismayed by that, I, I think the intent is there.
Yeah.
And in this first reading, so you will not vote on this again until a month from now, and we will make sure those corrections are, are made. So really, in first reading, you should be focusing on the intent.
Anything besides those two?
I have a question.
Yeah?
At the bottom of my page, it says page one of two. And I have some T's among them. On the back page, but is this, is this the right policy?
No, there is two pages, so page one of two is there, and then page two of two is on, on the back, is the, uh, policy adoption procedure. That was the second page. Yep, you just must have gotten it out of order.
I believe it killed a turkey.
Everything else okay, don't you?
Yeah, it is now.
Okay.
I was, I was.
Are we ready to move on to the next policy? You guys ready? Okay, which is BGR, which I believe you had no changes.
We will have to make sure we go through and make sure we, every place where it says board, so that the same, same thing is the last one. Somebody in that.
Any thoughts, concerns, comments, questions? No? All right?
So I can tell you the reason this happened this way, not that anybody cares, but if you see it in the future, we did ask for, we do ask for most updated copies from main school management, and so they're always going to send you the ones that say school board.
Okay, so next is CBIR, and that is the Superintendent Evaluation Timeline. And you should have a separate sheet in your packet, because there are quite a few changes on this one. And they're all in red. This is an appropriate time to see that we're going to be starting this process. Starting tonight, actually, so. Would you guys like to just go through it, the short?
Did you all find it, you all find the one that has red on it?
It was not in the attachment, it was in the paper, separate in your packet. And it looks like this, looks like this, Joe.
Josh.
I'd like that both the ones.
It's got a lot of red in it.
I don't think you need to show them, actually, you have the table.
It is.
Yeah, I saw that somewhere. I need a big table. But don't let people do that.
You sure? Okay. So in the first, under timeline, it says July, August, and then under action, that didn't change. Superintendent, School Committee Review Strategic Plan, she sets school district goals for the year. Next is, you'll see it says at the second meeting in December. Superintendent Reports Interim Progress on District Goals and His Performance Goals to the School Committee in Executive Session. The School Committee also determines compensation, benefits, extension of contract, and other matters relevant to the superintendent's employees. Anything there that anybody has any concern?
And part of that is also due to the fact that we need to let them know for continuing contract purposes, right?
Right, right, for. You need to leave a letter to the Department of Education.
Yep.
Okay, next is by the first meeting in April.
I just.
At the end of the contract.
We don't need one.
At the, at the end of the contract.
Yeah.
Not during the continuing years of it.
Yeah, so for instance, for, particularly for Tim and Kelly, Winter hired me to a three-year contract, so really, you don't really need to do anything this year, because you not only hired me to the contract, you attach the wages as well. So as Janet just said, you really only have to take this step when my, when the contract is being, is expired. Or you have to fulfill all the pieces like salary and stuff in that.
Okay, next, by the first meeting in April, which is tonight, by the way, in consultation with the superintendent, school committee identifies sources of information, including those who have an understanding of his duties and who rarely interact with him in order to conduct annual superintendent evaluation. By the second meeting in April, through its chair, school committee begins collecting information from sources with goal to complete by May first. By the first meeting in May, superintendent completes his self-assessment and provides to school committee in executive session. School committee members submit their individual evaluation to the chair, accompanied by specific examples related to conduct and our behavior, including commendations and recommendations. You good so far?
Uh-huh.
By the second meeting in May, the chair and vice chair assemble a collective evaluation, disseminate to individual school committee members for review, and make any final adjustments. School committee meets in executive session to review superintendent's self-assessment and all other information collected related to superintendent's performance. School committee meets with superintendent to discuss evaluation. The superintendent also provides feedback to the school committee about its responsibilities and matters related to superintendent's performance. By June first, a copy of the final written evaluation is placed in superintendent's personal folder. And by the first Wednesday meeting in June, superintendent and school committee set superintendent's performance goals for the year, and it says it again, by the first Wednesday meeting in June. Question?
Well, did I already specify first Wednesday meeting in June, where all the others were just saying at the first meeting or at the second meeting?
I think maybe that was just a typo.
Okay.
So we can take off the Wednesday. That makes it more consistent.
Yep. Let's do it.
Any questions about the process?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much for taking the time to go over that. And next is GBGE, Return to Work in Light Duty Assignments, and we have no changes. Any questions or thoughts? And lastly, we had GDP and PPE. And this is, this is new, right?
It is new, yes.
Questions, thoughts?
Kelly? I'm just wondering if the language will need to be changed based on anything that we discussed in negotiations?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
It's pretty short this week, but. Yeah, this is less specific.
I start the same thing too, Kelly, but then I said, I think you refer to state laws, federal laws, et cetera, and that's all I can really do, is what following those basically as they're established. And even the change which which the legislation now has that goes to exclude certain cultures, et cetera, which is extremely important, otherwise it's a mess, how to figure that out. Hopefully that will get passed, who knows?
Thank you. Any other discussion or questions? Not, I can call the vote. Pass it unanimously. Okay. I'll entertain a motion to authorize the superintendent to issue seven hundred and fifty dollar bonuses to teachers and administrators, and four hundred dollar bonuses to hourly and paraprofessional staff for additional work undertaken during the pandemic.
So moved.
Second. Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Yes. Thank you. To everyone in Winter Public Schools. Thank you to Superintendent Hodgkin for putting this on the table. So many staff have stepped up and gone over and above. This has been a very difficult year for everyone. And to be able to do this, to me, is one of the very least things that we can do as, as a community, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
My only thing is, I'd like to leave it open as to what the amounts would be. I kind of like to, I'm definitely not against giving bonuses. Some of you know, I distributed information about that earlier on, and what other school districts were going on. And I do think we have the ability to do it, and certainly we should do it, no questions about that. But these may be minimums to what I'm thinking about versus maximums, what I'm thinking about. And I think some of this could be better resolved if we just leave it kind of open right now, and either revisit it at our next meeting, or all the meeting after, because I mean, we wouldn't do anything without what this group basically did. But the status of how much money we think we should put into it might change, and let's put it that way. So that, that's just the way I feel about it. I'd rather just not have specifically identified tonight, but to say that this is the direction.
My only concern is if we wait, then I just, I would rather give that amount. If we find later that we want to do another one, which we may or may not, that's fine, but I just don't, I would rather do this now and reward them now. I mean, I would be great, Joe, to offer more as well, but I think this is at least a start.
I agree with Janet.
Well, it will take a while to get prepared and everything, so what is the date we want to pass them on?
Well, you mentioned earlier, I like that idea of doing it in May, around the teacher appreciation.
There is a teacher appreciation day, a national day on May fourth. And that was a suggestion I mentioned to Jim, saying that might be appropriate. Might be appropriate to involve as many student members as possible.
I think the student reps ought to pass them on.
Oh, I think they should do it.
That would be awesome.
Yeah, that would be awesome.
And I don't think a pass on is appropriate. I think doing something in a more formal way, rather than having to show up at your account, but to actually do it like handing out a check or whatever you do.
I really like that idea, too, Joe.
So, Joe, I don't mean to put words in your mouth, but did you want to talk about another related piece to this?
Well, I also said that my concern was, there are some, what did you call them, non-employee employees?
Right.
But there are people who ride the bus, there are people who do the cleaning. There are other people that are providing valuable service to us. And I think in some way, we should also be recognizing them, if only by providing them with some kind of a gift certificate. You know, because they are technically an employee of ours, but they tech, they do deserve our thing, so they deserve it. So that was one of my other things to say, gives us a chance to think this through just a little bit, a little more.
And in case this is not making a great deal of sense, that part of it, what Joe was referring to is we contract out for our bus services, and for most of our building cleanings and stuff, we have custodians, obviously, that are here during the day. They're our employees. The bus drivers and the FMS employees are not ours. So it would be very strange, unprecedented, and I would, I don't know how, I don't know how we'd do it to consider providing bonuses to people who are not our employees, and those people are not. So when we talked about it, perhaps as part of the negotiations, Joe had said, well, maybe we can do some sort of gift certificate supporting our local businesses, either Ted, the trackside place, or Fast Eddie's or something here in town. Provide, we could provide those to these other people as well. I thought it was an excellent idea. Not sure these would be part of the motion, but I just, in full disclosure, I thought that was a great idea.
I, I agree, I think, you know, I mentioned last night when we had our small committee meeting, my father-in-law is a bus driver in Madison, and he was scared to death to get back on the bus. And I can imagine that our bus drivers probably felt the same way. And, I mean, if we're, if we're recognizing the hard work and the unprecedented work that our staff are doing, it seems like a good idea to also recognize anybody else who supports our children.
So this is part of the reason I wanted to not give us too firm doubt here, that let's just talk about some other possibilities here. If, if we aim to May fourth, we could do something as well.
I'm not sure we have to do it all in the same motion, do we?
No, no, and I, I would respectfully disagree. I think that if you wait, if we waited till the twenty-eighth, when our next meeting is, that would not happen by May fourth.
Especially if you want printed checks.
There's people who want printed checks, which I really.
Undertaking.
And, and I'm, I'm trying to figure out which one of you is going to come in and explain that to.
I know.
I don't know.
That's what I'm thinking.
No, shall we find one?
Or Amanda, whoever's going to print on.
It's going to be Ida.
Okay.
So for right now, we'll just keep the motion as it is, and we will vote on that.
I would like, I would almost like, and I don't mean necessarily a formal proposal, but like, I think that would be a great idea to do, or to give cards or whatever else, but like, you want a map to what places, what if your bus drivers, I know they, obviously, your, your, cleaning crew obviously comes to Winter to work, so that would be great, but what if they don't live here?
Well, I want to be able to support our, our own local.
Absolutely, yeah.
Is that something that should go on our next agenda?
Same thing, I would like to, I mean, I don't, I don't know, I would like, yeah, it doesn't matter to me.
I have another question, too. That needs to be decided, when we say teachers, you think we've even said teachers and administrators, but. I think there are some cases where administrators should be separated out, and why, maybe a little bit more for having been forced in some respects by the pandemic to be even more responsible and more on the squad, you know, all these things would say. Not that I'm downplaying teachers, I'm just saying that there is a difference in this thing. And the same way as I might, I might, if I am asked to, say, well, nurses were highly involved in some of this, and they're well-known, what they took this job for, but they certainly helped us all. That's the reason I'm not rushing into this thing, is because I'm not sure it's all invented out of nothing.
Are the nurses included in hourly or paraprofessional?
They, no, they are the, they're part of the teacher contract, right?
Teacher. Joe, would you, is there a different amount that you would suggest beyond the seven fifty and the four hundred? Is there a way that we can amend this motion tonight, and make a decision tonight instead of holding off?
You, you certainly can. The, this is, this is, and I'm not, this sounds really weird. This is, I'm only aware of one other school that's doing this, and this is already more than they are given. And I'm not saying, I mean, I've always said we'll never give them what they, what they, what they were, so I don't know what the right number is. This just was, you know, just playing with some numbers what I kind of come up with, so. I mean, I'm certainly, I'm sure that if you change the numbers, nobody's going to complain. I'm not going to complain.
So you asked, you know, what for gift certificates, and we had bounced around the idea of fifty dollars for the bus drivers and janitorial staff that are not directly employed by the school. It's not a significant amount of people.
Do we know how many it is? Those are the kind of questions that were bouncing around in my hearing. Mr. Hodgkin had kind of it all laid out with all the numbers. How many bus here and that do we have?
I think it's about, between those two, it's probably between fifteen and twenty, between bus drivers and FMS employees.
I think that's appropriate. Let's just say if I wanted to.
Eight buses, eight buses, and probably the same number of FMS employees, too.
We have a question from the audience. I'm sure you're considering asking, the OTPT speech, be included somewhere?
Yes.
Those would be the professionals.
Yeah, those would be, those, those are actually part of the professional staff. They're not in the professional contract, but.
No, no, sorry, that's what I meant, the teacher, administrator, staff, yes.
Correct.
So are we talking about a thousand dollars?
Yeah, less than.
I'm also.
Well, I would casually say that, uh, if you want to stick with the seven fifty and the four hundred, I think the administrator is at least a thousand. Or what we define as being the administrator. Well, that's, that's the question. What do we define as the administrator or what, who is?
Well, be the ones that follow the administrative contract.
Who is that? Principal, vice principal?
Uh, well, currently not everybody's in that. So, um, sitting in this room tonight would be Mrs. Fawcett and Mr. Ladd, Mr. Randall, Mr. Randall. Mr. Delisle and, and Mrs. White are not. Uh, I'm not. Mark and Yola both are.
So how do we classify you and?
Well, I, I moved this all under the teachers administrators.
So if we change it so that the teachers have one amount and administrators have the other, do you stay with the teachers or do you move with the administrators?
I would, I would go with the administrators. I, I know this is going to sound really, really strange and I appreciate the sentiment, but these guys are probably all shooting tomorrow. I, I don't think that's a very good idea to, to change that. I think it's, uh, our, our roles are definitely different. And it's been a very, very challenging year. But I think, and I know it sounds really crazy to think that differentiating is going to, is going to cause any bad feelings, it really shouldn't. But I just, I don't see the reason, I don't see the need for it. And I'd certainly, if any of the administrators want to argue differently, Mark?
I would argue differently, and I'll actually support what you're saying because the stress level for all of us has been, you know, unreal. But best dressed in the classroom, or best stressed working with the kids individually. You know, it's just as great as the stress that you have in your system. But thank you.
Thank you.
I think the consideration is, is worth a lot as well.
So.
The bonus is a, is a number. Is it the right number? I don't know, but it's, it's really, I think, more the thought than, than anything else as far as I'm concerned.
Well, it's also unprecedented. I mean, this, we don't get, teachers don't have our gift bonuses, administrators don't have our gift bonuses.
We are all about getting bonus, right? This is hard.
Yes.
So do we want to amend this to include the gift cards for the non-employee employees?
Yes.
So.
So do I have to, since I made the motion?
Whoever made the motion should amend it and whoever, who made the second?
I can tell you.
If you can just have a friendly amendment, that would be great.
So, um, I would like to amend this to include, can I just say fifty dollar gift cards to local establishments or to be determined?
I would say local establishments if you want.
Local establishments for, um, our FMS employees and our, um, bus drivers from Ruffix Charter.
Yep.
I second the, the amended motion. Okay, moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Are you ready to vote? All right. The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. And I wasn't kidding about having you guys, the student reps, be a part of distributing those.
And I just wanted to kind of echo what Jana said, that we really do appreciate everything that the staff, all of the staff has done this year. Any public comments? Are we going to discuss those? Oh, I knew I was going to do that. I used to, I still went right by it. I started making the amendment notes. Okay, yes, we need to discuss the superintendent evaluation tool, which I sent to you all by video, but I also had Paul put it in your packet, which you wanted to look at it and back tell me. This is the, the form that we used in December. And I've talked to Mr. Hodgkin about it and he's fine with this. Does anybody have any thoughts, questions, concerns, something else they like better?
Other than the need to change the name, we're not MSAD twenty-one.
Right.
RSU twenty-one, I'm sorry.
I thought it worked fairly well in the last time. Um, I know the presentation of it, we're going to work on so that that is different. But I think that is sort of covered in this as well.
The timeline, that's why we did the timeline.
Yeah.
To work out those pages. And, uh, obviously if anybody has any questions or concerns, they can get ahold of Jana or myself. We can help you in any way. But if nobody has any objections to this, we'll move forward with it and you can start working on it.
Perfect.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Now we can go to public comments.
None?
None?
Did you send out a thing? You're so good.
Oh, she did, she's on it.
Crazy.
Oh, oh, that's right, too.
Uh, Bridget Van Black would like clarification on what Wednesdays should look like for students and teachers. What are the expectations of both?
Yeah, so I'm actually really glad that I was afraid that wasn't going to come up. Um, because there's been a lot of discussion. I think the intent of, of Wednesdays has, from the very beginning is what we refer to as planning and processing. Um, in a social media piece, there was some question about, about deep cleaning. We never subscribe to that as a, as a system. So the, the intent of Wednesdays is that, um, I'm going to show my age here, so it won't make sense. But essentially the work that is, is being given to students is what I would refer to as independent practice, as defined by Madeline Hunter, as showing my age. So it's not, was never intended to be new instruction. It's not intended to be, um, you know, any, anything that's going to cause a great deal of stress. Uh, we realize that the students who are in person are under the same kind of stress here that we are. So it's not about new instruction, it's not about, um, new learning, any of those types of things. It really is, um, to allow the teachers the opportunity to sort of, and of course, as we've gotten along, they're, they're getting better, so their, their days are looking a little bit different. But they are, it really does break up their week between a pretty stressful Monday, Tuesday, and a pretty stressful Thursday, Friday. And they have an opportunity to, to touch base with, with students. The interesting thing in, in some of the social media stuff that's out there is we, we're hearing about some kids get the work done in twenty minutes. And they sometimes do it on Tuesday and they don't have anything on Wednesday. I, I'm bothered that, that that bothers people. Like that's a, that's, that's a bad thing. Because on the other side, we also are hearing from people who think, um, well, just dealt with the situation at the middle school where the parent is concerned that their child is spending three hours or more working on the same assignments that, you know, other people are doing much quicker. So it, it really is, is not intended to be a source of frustration. It really is about doing work that we would expect students know how to do. And so it's verification that they, um, we give them the assignment, they do that and pass it back in. And we have, it's verification that they know and can do things that we expect them to do independently. So it's, uh, you know, it seems to be a lot of, a lot of different definitions of what should be happening on Wednesday. But I think we've been very consistent as a school system about how we use our Wednesdays. And, um, staff are expected to touch base with students, but it, but not necessarily in terms of instruction. It's really attendance type of thing. And, um, and that's pretty loose, it's pretty loose. So, um, yes.
Um, this Van Black would like to see if that's acceptable, I think.
Sure.
Hello. Um, so I guess my concern is that it is just so inconsistent. And it's not that, hey, we appreciate the day off, um, but it's just inconsistent. So I was really concerned, well, what is the expectations of the teachers? And then there was a change mid-year where it was decided that in-person teachers would be in-person teachers and then there would be remote teachers. And the way I understood it at the beginning of the year was this was a day, this Wednesday was a day for them to collaborate, figure out what best practices were going to be, what they could work on their planning so that they were able to be better teachers and better, and the students would also, you know, get the best, best of both worlds. But now what I'm seeing is that day, obviously they don't need it for preparation for online learning because that's not what they're doing. They're doing in-person teaching. So now it just feels like as a, as a parent, it feels like this is just a break for the teachers and the students, which I'm fine with my son having a break, but let's be real, if it's just a break for the teachers, where's the added benefit for the child? There is benefit of having that consistency and going to school and having that learning. It's going to be hard in the spring or in the next spring for him, or sorry, fall, for him to go back to school learning five days a week.
Um, I'm not sure it'll be as difficult as, as you're suggesting because the, that whole notion of the, the way lessons are broken down, um, is still going to be there. So there's still will be days, and there still are now, that they, they go through new instruction, reinforcing of the, of the curriculum, um, doing the independent work. But the other thing I wanted to just point out, because you'd said it earlier, we made the change to remote and in-person learning K through eight early in the year, not, not midway through the year. And one of the things they spent, the teachers spent a lot of time, and it was a concern of the school committee at the time we were doing this, is that we try to, we want the experience for our remote learners and our in-person learners to be as close as possible. So a lot of, and Megan White is here, who's been coordinating that for us. Uh, a lot of that time on those Wednesdays were between the teachers, the in-person teachers and the remote teachers to make sure that they, they were pacing. Spending a lot of time working, focusing on the pacing so that, um, that the remote learners didn't get too far ahead or too far behind. Uh, and so there's, there's, and that still happens a lot, not, probably not as much because they're just getting better at it. Um, so I'm not really sure what is meant by the inconsistency. Because I think with, with, um, Mrs. White sort of spearheading that work with, with making sure that the curriculum is consistent between the remote and in-person learners, I, I think it's probably about as consistent as possible. And I know you didn't bring this up, it's probably, and you, and you probably are aware of it. But Mr. Campbell raised the standard to say this, but I, I have a pretty good sense that he was going to say this. Our high school staff has been doing asynchronous learning, I mean, sorry, synchronous learning the entire year, which means they are dealing with the students who are at home and in-person all at the same time. And a lot of them are doing, uh, meeting with those kids on Wednes, those same students on Wednesday as well, uh, which is what they've chosen to do. It's not necessarily an expectation from the, the school committee. So it's, it's a.
Well, I think that inconsistency that I speak of is some teachers are meeting, they'll hold Zooms, they will have activities or watch this video and they'll assign homework in the morning. Some people do, they assign homework the day before, um, and they don't hold Zoom. So there's definitely inconsistencies in that respect. And additionally, there was, when we first started the school year, we were going for four days a week, and that was supposed to be temporary for the first ten weeks, as I recall, um, for the first quarter. And then it was going to be revisited after that. But we've stayed at four and I'm super thankful we were able to at least stay at four. That's been great. We've been very fortunate. But I just wasn't sure, like what's, so I don't imagine we will be going to five this year. I think we will stay at four, but that's my assumption.
So, uh, that's a, that's a good assumption. And the board did vote after, towards the end of the first quarter to extend Wednesdays for the remainder of the year. And there were, there were a number of reasons for that. But the reason we are not, there's a big push nationally from President Biden and through each state to get more students back. That's not been a push for us here in Winter because our kids are already here eighty percent of the time. Other districts, the majority, there are some districts that are doing a hundred percent and they're, they're really struggling with that. But the majority of the, of the schools in the state of Maine are doing forty percent. The kids are in school only two days out of, um, the week. And so their push, as I'm looking, and I meet every week with the kind of the superintendent's on Thursdays. And so people are talking about bringing kids back more than, more than two days, and that is happening. But our biggest obstacle, and first of all, I want to make sure I'm clear, that our intent is to be back five days in the fall. But there are some things that need to happen, and those are the things that are getting in our way right now, which is distancing. We're still, we still have, um, some pretty significant space issues. We knew, kind of knew from the beginning that if we had twenty percent of our kids remote, we could, we could pull it off. And while the CDC, the federal CDC is now in line with the state CDC that says the distancing within a classroom is three feet, as long as you're masked, um, still, I mean, has been reduced. The distancing for teachers has not. Teachers are still expected to be six feet away. And while that may not seem like a really big deal, it is a big deal. It's, it's the difference of, you know, in some cases, two and three, four students in a classroom, depending on, you know, if you're talking about, um, four and five-year-olds versus the size of a middle school, high school kid. Um, it's, it's a big difference. So, um, I just, it's, um, I, I just, having done this job for a long, long time, I look at the work and I get around to, to all the buildings and, and talk to the administrators and the teachers. And I, I, I know everybody would love to have their students back five days a week. But I'm looking at, and even if I were leaning towards that, we have, over the past two weeks, we've had school, the grade school be closed for an entire week, for ten days. Uh, we had, uh, the middle school, I know that prompted some of this, um, social media bullets, you know, closed on Monday. And I can say that Mrs. Chris and the staff worked their butts off to make sure they could be open on Tuesday. It would have been very easy to say, ah, we'll just quarantine for, you know, ten days. That's not what happened. So they all get looked at very, very seriously and, um, you know, everybody's, I think everybody's working exceptionally hard to, to make good work. And I would, I would be really remiss if I didn't say this. Throughout the course of this year, I have been incredibly impressed with the, um, parents and the community of Withrow. Because for the most part, I think people totally get how hard people are working and they're very thankful for, as you mentioned earlier, that we've been able to have our students here eighty percent of the time. And up until the last two or three weeks, we've been able to avoid the, um, the long closures and such. And I can't say much publicly, but we're dealing with another issue, uh, tonight that came to, to my attention as I was coming into the board. So there's a lot to it.
Jana?
Um, I don't remember the meeting date, but these are all recorded. When Mrs. White, Mrs. White did her presentation about what exactly staff and students were doing. It was quite a lengthy presentation. So I would really encourage if you, if you have the time to go back and just, and view that as well. If you look through the agenda minutes, it would have Megan White, um, presentation on distance learning. She really filled in a lot of gaps as to what, how that time was being used, especially on Wednesdays, as well as, uh, one of the reasons why we did decide to continue it for staff and students.
Megan, do you know when that was?
I don't know exactly. I have an ad piece about Wednesdays right now.
That'll be right there immediately? Thank you all.
Megan, Erica.
Oh, yes.
I do just have an additional comment on that. As Wednesdays, I'm.
You can speak up.
Yep. So Wednesdays, I'm across all, all buildings. So I really get to see things really deeply. And something that I don't think people are realizing is that when we have a quarantine situation, we have, even in this specific situation, like in the middle school or grade school where we have remote teachers, if a student is on quarantine, they are not joining the remote program, they are learning from home. So that means their regular ed teacher now has to prepare materials for a student for ten days who is not in person. And that takes up a large amount of their time on Wednesdays, too. They potentially hold Zooms with students who haven't been in a classroom for four days. So that time really this year has morphed into them helping to support our in-person learners who are forced because of exposure to stay at home, to still be successful and transition back into the building. And I think that's a huge piece we didn't think about as much in the fall, but has become part of practice right now for our K eight teachers. So I just wanted to recognize that also publicly.
So, so one last thing that, um, this is really kind of. So, one last thing that, this is really kind of jumping ahead a little tiny bit, but I think it's important for members of the community to know this, that we, and I mentioned it briefly here, that we have the, what we're referring to as S R three monies that are coming through. For our community, it's about $1.5 million. And our intent is to address, we, we know, as hard as people have tried, the learning experience has not been perfect for our in, well, our in-person, pretty darn close to perfect, but our remote students have, have had a real mixed bag of, of successes. And so, we have a number of students higher than we would typically anticipate that will need remedial experiences next year when they come back to school. And so, our focus over the next few years is going to be, almost all of that money will be focused on remediation and identifying where students at and providing the initial support to, to get kids up to speed. And I know this is going to sound really bad, and I don't mean to make it sound as bad as it is, but particularly with middle school kids, who are my passion, it's a real challenge to get middle school students to do all their work when it's sitting right in front of your face. To have them choose to not be in school and expect them to do as well is, is just not realistic. So, it's been hard, and, and so we are focusing our, our resources moving forward on those students who are, who have not really taken advantage of this year, and making sure that we take at least the next couple of years to get them caught up.
Are there any other public comments? Any comments from anybody here? Okay, so, we go on to our school committee comments. Jana?
Just good luck to spring season, and just a question for Joel, are spectators allowed at spring sports?
Yes. Just had a drafted letter sent to the superintendent today for approval.
Awesome. Great news. So, good luck to all of them, and thank you to, well, thank you to all the staff from Winter Carnival. I obviously haven't been to Winter Carnival since I've been to high school. Very much enjoyed Josh's commentaries on Facebook and his video of it. It seemed like a really fun time, so I'm glad that with all that's going on at the high school, got to have a little fun and hopefully enjoy themselves, so. That's all I got.
Thank you. Kelly? Anything tonight? Joel?
Actually, I would love to have Mr. Thornton tell us about the Hobie Baker Award that was won by Jared White?
Melo.
Melo, that's Jared Melo, which I believe, and I've talked to Joel about, is the first time ever that we've received this award, but it's a little different from what I thought it was. So, Joel?
Yeah, it's originally, I was telling Joel, I spoke today, you need about it, just because I thought it was something that was only at the college level, and it's actually something, if you do go on our website, it is a college award, but it was something that he got for sportsmanship off the ice. So, it's a huge award, and he received it under the umbrella of just one of the pillars that represents the award. So, it's, to me, it's, it really speaks to his character, and it also is, it speaks to the coach, who did a really nice job relaying that, because obviously, the people sitting on the committee have never had the opportunity. To me, it's a nickname, and because of how he was able to present him, he won this award representing me. So, it's a really big deal.
You said name, right?
Yep.
Great. That's what I just want to make sure we talked about a little bit, because it's so unusual, but it's also typical. We have so many awards that students receive, and you're going back to the undergrads, or when they enter some of these competitions, it's, it's well reflected in the type of education or something, yeah. It's great.
That is awesome. Can I take?
Just one quick thing, just a positive clap to the grade school. I thought they did a good job with the parent-teacher conferences, you know, relating to the parents, accommodating the times. Very, they did a good job of that. So, what I saw.
Thank you. Josh?
Just a quick, today, a certain leadership team met with Mrs. White, and we talked about some advisory, like what it would really look like. I think this year, just because of the pandemic, we kind of lost our advisory block a little bit, which is just depending, but we've got to talk a little bit about it and talk about some memories that we've kind of had, and how it's kind of an important part of it. I think that'll be very nice for, like, the upcoming, our class, and it's just a nice way to have memories, especially like when you come in and you have a group of people that you can go to, and you're assigned to one teacher, and you talk about all those different factors, and I really, I really knew that meaning. And then, just a quick thing, I know that we're like getting more towards our vaccinations and kind of hopefully immunization. But like, I mean, I just took whatever, I guess, we'll listen, but I think we, we still need to be aware of everything that's going on. Our neighboring school, Marinica, is going to be out for quite a while, and just like, anything can happen, and because we are in 80% of the time, I feel like we'd be like, we, anything, I think, it'd go pretty badly. But just like, kind of a reminder that I'm very proud of us, the whole Winter community, because we've made it so far already to a strong ending.
Thank you. Emily?
As Ms. Deacon said, we had our March Madness two weeks ago, and that was just a lot of fun. We really, really appreciate the staff organizing that and just allowing us to have that kind of, just kind of being able to forget what's going on and simply able to do that with classmates. That was really amazing. And, yeah, we have also part of March Madness, we were able to watch the One Act play, which is on the Rambler Productions YouTube. If you want to watch that, it's very interesting, and definitely get, watch it if you want to. Josh is a star, he's amazing. And then, also, we have a town meeting on Tuesday, but people can always join.
Are those always at nine?
Yes.
Staff member of the month will be present as well.
I know you're going to say what was, no.
And that's just coming Tuesday?
Yes.
Okay, and I just wanted to remind everybody that our next meeting will be on the 28th because of before vacation. And I just wonder, wish everybody a nice vacation. And so, if there's no objection, I will declare the meeting adjourned at 8:07.